This map's not, in particular, map's not in your packet. But at any rate, there are some Springdale Water Utilities lines there now, and there are no... And we, the city owns this parcel. There are some facilities in there now, and the water department is wanting to make sure that their lines are preserved by an easement, and that's what this would do, would be to grant them an easement across this parcel where the lines already are. It's really that simple.
Is there any reason not to go ahead and just deed the whole parcel to them, since it's a small remnant?
Well, there's actually two parts to this. The reason this even came to our attention in the first place was because the property owner who owns a lot adjacent to this had approached the city about acquiring this from the city.
Right.
And in the context of looking at that and investigating this, because the city has to maintain it, it's not really doing us any good. Like I said, it probably should have went to the water and sewer in the first place. Water and Sewer Department has no problem with that going to the property owner here as long as their easements are preserved. And in the context of that, they also found that there were a couple of water and sewer facilities on this adjacent lot that weren't documented either, and this property owner has agreed to convey those easements to Water and Sewer as well. Water and Sewer Department has no interest in obtaining the whole parcel. They just want their easements done.
Well, they got prescriptive easement on the neighboring property anyway.
So, this is kind of a two-step process. The first step is to preserve the water and sewer easements across this property. And then, once that's done, I may come back to you and request...
Deed it over to the property owner?
That's correct.
Yeah.
Okay.
I move that, we move this resolution forward to the full council for the recommendation for approval.
Second.
Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you. Third, let's see. Second item is a resolution authorizing the transfer of property to the Springdale Public Facilities Board.
This is, Jeff, this is a Station 8, the corner of Huntsville and, is that Conneer? I think.
Yes.
And the Public Facilities Board donated the property to the city to build the station. And there's a pretty good piece left on the north side. And so, we're asking you to donate, or to give that property back. That property we don't need, it's just property we would have to maintain. Give it back to the Public Facilities Board, and maybe they can sell it to somebody.
Is it actually big enough to do anything with?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, it's a, I don't know if we have the size in there. Of course, they could, I think they own a lot next to it too, Ernest, so they could add it to the... Mark, they could add it to what they've already got too, if they need to. I think that's right. I'll have to look at it on a map.
It looks like it's 1.31 acres.
Yeah, so it's, it's big enough. I wouldn't say it was around a five-acre piece they donated, I'm not sure. No, it wasn't that big. If that's one point. Probably a three-acre piece. So, that's the story.
Move, resolution passed.
Second.
Okay, is there any further discussion concerning that resolution? You, you moved that the resolution passed, are you asking that it be forwarded to council with recommendation for approval?
Yes.
He forgot where he was. He doesn't...
All right. And that's the second as well? Okay. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you. That'd be the committee of the whole. Now, we'll open the finance committee, item number three.
Hey, Jeff, real quick, are we supposed to have any other council members? I don't know if there's an internet connection. I'm just looking at the bottom of the screen.
Y'all noticed, hey, guys, I know Amelia was gonna try and zoom in. Do you have her, or... Okay, she's not showing up up here. We want to be sure and give her an opportunity to vote. Brian, so y'all know, Brian Powell's on his way to drill. He's got National Guard this weekend, so he's on the road, couldn't join us. But he said he's for everything, so, just so y'all know.
We can't hear you.
Is he going to DC?
I hope not.
We can't hear you, Amelia.
That's all right, you're perfect, right like that, don't worry about the detail.
We're not, we're not getting Amelia's audio.
Just use hand signals, don't worry about it.
Can you hear us? Okay. We'll get you on in just a minute.
You should just do thumbs up or thumbs down.
Yeah. There she is.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Unfortunately, yes.
All right, I think we're ready to move on, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
Amelia, we're, I don't know if you just joined us, we're just starting finance committee.
Yes, no, I actually voted on the other stuff too, but I didn't know anybody couldn't hear me, sorry.
Did you vote yea or nay?
I did yea on both.
Okay, great. All right. First item before the finances, number three, has to do with purchase of some property at 400 Park Street. I guess that's Quonset Hut?
Yes, that's the Quonset Building there, that's also the home of Hospital Auxiliary. They have found another home if, if, if we buy this. And this is a, it'll be needed when Luther George Park is renovated. And we've, Pat's, we've talked to Pat's and with Dean, and we could buy this with CDBG funds. Buy it and raise it with CDBG funds. And that's what we're asking for you all to, to approve tonight, or to forward tonight. Two hundred and thirty-four thousand, I think.
So, is this basically, the resolution authorizes the use of the CDBG funds as well?
Ernest, would this cover that? With what's, what we have in the resolution?
What was the question?
Would it, would it, does, I'm not looking at it, I can go find it. Does the resolution designate CDBG funds to purchase?
Yes, yes, it does. And, and if it, and as long as it appraises for this amount.
Right, that's the contingency. Well, we've got the appraisal on this. You're thinking of the streets, I think. Of the two acres.
Oh, that's right.
Yeah, this, this one has been appraised.
That's right.
Any plan on it? Go ahead, Amelia.
The appraisal there is for 283,100, is that correct?
235, right.
Let me get there.
283, I think, is what the, in the...
230, oh, 283?
She's on the next...
The City of Springdale is determined by appraisal that the sum of 283,100 is the best estimated just compensation for the property needed from Trinity Grace Church in North West Arkansas.
Now, that, you're on the, go back to item three, Amelia, you're on a...
Am I on the wrong thing?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
You're on a property settlement. I think it's 234, but I'm going from memory. I can't get it to come up.
Yeah, I see it, it's 235, yeah.
I can't get mine to come up either. We had it appraised by Reading Associates, and this is the amount.
Gotcha, okay, perfect.
And the auxiliary is willing to sell it for that?
Auxiliary is willing to sell it. Jill has worked hard on this, along with Hans and Northwest Hospital. We, we, when we first started this, we thought Northwest actually owned the property, but they don't. It's actually owned by the auxiliary.
Yeah, yeah, it's always been owned by the auxiliary.
So, how, how does...
Uh, Jill, where do they move into?
They didn't tell me.
I've heard.
I don't know.
Okay.
I just, I found, I heard they found the hospital, Hans helped them to find the location that fit their...
I was thinking it was nearer the hospital, but I'm not sure about that.
How does, how does CDBG have funds for this?
This is, you know, this would be part of our annual, about the 800,000 or so we get from CDBG annually. And remember, we're having trouble spending all that on housing rehab. Just having, just having the time or the contractors to get that much rehab done. So, this is, this is in, this year's, this would be out of this year's CDBG funds.
So, it would fall under rehab?
It'd fall under rehab, yeah, it'd be a, as opposed to programs, yeah.
Okay.
Well, I move, we move this resolution forward to the full council for recommendation for approval.
Second.
Okay, any further...
One question real quick, is the plan to tear that down, or is the plan to like...
It'll tear it down, it will tear it down. Yeah, and, and we'll also pay for that out of CDBG funds.
Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay. What would that counsel? Item number four is authorize, resolution authorizing expenditure of funds to acquire property on Dixie Lam Road Project? Who wants to talk about that?
I'll, I'll be happy to. This is a...
Can you talk up?
Sure, this is on the Dixie Lam Road Project. It's a property owned by Trinity Grace Church. The city had an appraisal done, the property owner also had an appraisal done. And I've enclosed a segment of the property owner's appraisal, where they appraised it at $2.34 a square foot. I believe our appraisal was $2.00 a square foot. Our estimate was $283,100. They've made an offer to settle for 325,565, which is an additional 42,465. This one has not been filed in court. We're trying to settle it without having to file it in court.
What monies do we use for, for these acquisitions?
This is bond program.
Street bond.
Street bond, okay.
So, do we usually, when, when somebody has an appraisal, independent appraisal, do we always usually go towards, to what they have done with their appraisal?
It depends on the rationale for the higher appraisal, Amelia, but, you know, Ernest looks over that and goes over it with me, and we determine, you know, if, a lot of times, you kind of meet in the middle somewhere, but not necessarily in the middle. It, it depends on what the rationale is for the, for the difference in the appraisals. And, and this is one where we felt it was, this was a, this was a justified price as opposed to continue, as opposed to actually fighting it. And, so, we, we felt like this was in the, this was something worth, an offer worth bringing to the council. I answered that pretty good, Ernest?
You did.
Doesn't it usually be able to litigate a deal for the city for $10,000, though? Isn't that the usual cost? Boy, he did back in '65, so, that's the last time we litigated with, so I guess that's...
How many more of these do we have coming? I mean, is this...
Oh, there'll be...
There's a bunch.
Yeah, there'll be a bunch as we do these road projects.
Yeah.
And we've, we've settled a bunch. Not as many come to council now, because of the way we're doing it now. The process has been much better, I think, for everyone. But, but this is one that we needed to bring to you. I think there's a lot of drainage issues in this too. A lot of this is, is needed for, for drainage. The road across their property kind of cuts their property in half with drainage. Not to say it's totally useless, because parking could be done, you know. There are some ways to work around some of that drainage, but they won't be able to build across it.
But did we negotiate any of this, or was that just, we just took our appraisal and their appraisal, and we're going with theirs?
No, we don't, we're not necessarily going with theirs.
No.
It's, it's a negotiated amount that, that the property owners provided to us that pursuant to the land acquisition policy that the mayor believes is reasonable to bring before council. For every one of these that you see, there's probably 30 or 40 you don't ever see. I don't know if that number's right, it might be more, it might be a little less, but you don't see very many of these. Thank good, knock on wood.
Yeah.
I know we got two tonight, but...
I think the, the main rationale on this was, it was the price per square foot. And there were some, they brought some other, their appraiser used some different comps or something, I think, and, and they were reasonable comps, so...
I move the resolution before to the council with recommendation to approve. Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? Not all those in favor forwarding counsel with recommendation for approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any opposed? All right, thank you. Item number five has to do with authorizing the city attorney to settle two condemnation lawsuits with Steve Gills.
Yeah, this is on Jean George Boulevard extension to Elm Springs Road. It's actually two parcels. They were filed as two different cases, but we're dealing with both of them together. These are just east of the roundabout at Elm Springs Road and Jean George Boulevard on the northeast, just adjacent to the northeast corner on the north side of the road. This case has been filed in court, we obtained the order of possession. Our estimate of just compensation is $56,300. We, last week, Mr. McCready, the property owner's attorney, and I participated in a court-ordered mediation, and this is a result of that mediation. And the requested settle amount will be a total of $98,500, which is 42,200 in new money. Just by way of background, I will tell you that the appraisals provided by the property owners totaled 186,000, and they're willing to settle for 98,500. Also, by way of reference, we talk sometimes about splitting the difference. Splitting the difference would have been 121,000, so we're actually doing quite a bit better than splitting the difference on this. There are a couple of side items that they've requested that, that we've agreed to do as far as reseating, putting in a turnaround on the driveway that they had before the condemnation. That would also flow with this, if this additional amount is approved. And Mr. McCready's here, if you have any questions for him.
We're about to close out this project, Jean George. And I think we're, I think we're sitting pretty good, aren't we, Wyman? We're gonna have money left. So, it wouldn't...
So, this comes out of what monies, I'm sorry?
It would come out of the street bond.
Okay.
Yep.
Well, I will, I will move that this is forwarded to council with recommendation for approval.
Second.
Is there any further discussion concerning this resolution? Not all those in favor of the resolution authorizing the city attorney to settle two condemnation lawsuits with Steve Gills? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, thank you. Item number six has to do with resolution authorizing the purchase of two tracts of property on Downham Road.
Oh...
Right?
No, I think you're, this is the state aid, number six is the state aid street money.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Rattle.
Resolution expressing the willingness of the city to utilize state aid, street monies.
We've, we've applied to have... Talk loud and in the mic, please, thank you.
We applied for state aid money to overlay 56th Street from Bob Mills Road to, out to Wagon Wheel. And we had asked for County Line Road also clear out to the park. The state cut us back at the Elm Springs city line. They didn't want to mix jurisdictions in this pot of money, since Elm Springs has already used theirs. So, anyway, this is a, a request to do for the overlay 90% state, 10% city.
Yeah, cities, I'm actually on that committee. And cities over, over 50,000 pay a 10%, pay the 10% match. Smaller cities don't have to pay that match. But, great program, we've, we've used it once before. It's, it, this actually came, came into being, this, this program came into being after the half-cent sales tax that was just extended, was passed back in 2012. And a lot of, a lot of cities out of the 500 cities in Arkansas, well over 450 now, have gotten overlay projects done, and this will be our second. And, so, good program, good program for cities.
And how is this paid?
The 10% would come out of, you got that figured in your budget, Brad? Future budget? It'll be, it'll be a year or two.
It'll come out of street funds?
Yeah.
I don't know whether it's budgeted yet or not, but it's...
Probably not yet.
When the time comes, this hadn't actually been approved, when it's approved, while we'll come back and make a budget adjustment.
It'll probably be in the 2022 budget. I don't...
Okay.
I don't, I doubt it gets approved, and, I mean, we're in line, we'll be in line.
Okay. I'm not sure how that mechanism...
They usually don't move that fast.
Okay.
Okay.
So, when it comes time, we'll, we'll know what the amount is and have to come back to this, is that how that works?
Correct.
This, this hasn't been bid, this project hadn't been bid yet.
Right.
They haven't authored, they haven't awarded it to us, and it hadn't been bid, so we'll have numbers after that.
Yeah, when we come back with a, with the expenditure, we'll, that y'all will approve that.
This is just council willingness to participate, is what we're asking.
Hard to turn down 90%.
Yeah.
Yeah, really. I'm, I'm gonna make a, a motion that the resolution go, be forwarded to council for approval, recommendation for approval.
Second.
All right. Any further discussion? All those in favor of this resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. Then, number seven has to do with the purchase of two tracts on Downham Road.
Well, what you see before you is what happens when I get out and drive around. I, uh...
With or without a shoulder?
Yeah, this is, this is...
You like those S-curves?
Yeah, 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 I do drive out by the park a lot to look at progress. And, and these S-curves, it's, it's a tight little set of an S, a tight little S-curve on the corner of West Downham and what eventually turns into Kerry Smith. And, uh, the property was for sale probably maybe two years ago, year and a half ago, and it was purchased. And now, I noted, I was out there and noticed a sign up again, and it was for sale again. So, I contacted a realtor and asked them to go ahead and, and work up a, a contract contingent on council approval and appraisal of 139.9. So, I don't know, that's, that's what we're asking you to approve. It's a, it's two acres. I really believe that, I, I don't know when we would do the road project, but I know that if, if somebody buys that and puts a house on it, we may never get to do that road project and straighten those curves out, so, or at least it'd be real expensive if we do. And we believe that we could do something with that, those S-curves when we're ready to do it, and still have a, a pretty good-sized, buildable residential lot there to put...
Oh, you mean later?
To put back on the market, yeah, later. So...
So, why, what, explain to me why we are getting rid of the S-curve?
Well, it's just, it's, it's dangerous, and it's, and, and as more and more homes are built out there and more happens around that park, I think we'll, I, I would just think we would really regret it if we don't... It's gonna have to be addressed, that S-curve is.
And ironically, I've heard several folks that live out in that area complaining about the S-curve, and me telling them the quieting didn't help.
I'll note that I'm out there quite a bit, and it is pretty dangerous. I think I've veered off a bit when it's icy over there, and then there's also blind turns where I've almost, not close, but I've seen deer that I think are easily, easily dangerous.
Okay. When, if, if and when we do this, after we cut the road out, will that lane, will we put that back up for sale to...
Right.
And maybe even do better?
And I hadn't thought about this until now, Randall, but, but Brad, if, if we wanted to spend the money at some point to go ahead and design what that's gonna look like, and we knew where the road was gonna be, we could, we could go ahead and split off what's gonna be left and sell it. We wouldn't have to wait on the road to be done. It'd probably be worth more after the road is done.
It probably would be, yeah.
Yeah.
We'd probably put in essentially a T-intersection, where you'd have Downham coming from the south to hit the extension of Kerry Smith, and then you could extend that further to the east if there was a tie-in project.
The long-range street plan shows Kerry Smith continuing east.
It continues east, and there's a wiggle, and it comes out essentially at County Line Road.
Basically, a county line extension at some point.
There's a trail over there in, in the plans too, right? Does it touch Downham, or is it just south of that?
The trail, uh...
I forget the name. But that, that heads out to Shaw Park.
There will be a, there will be a Spring Creek Trail that will continue westward from the game and fish facility, and it will follow the creek, pretty much, and then it will have to come up the hill, and it would probably come in where these, where this road is.
Okay.
And then, continue on and connect to the park.
And what is that, what fund does this come out of, again?
This would come out of our general fund reserves, so that approximately 11 or 12 million dollars that we've, isn't that right, Colby?
11,225.
Okay.
What'd he say?
11,225.
Dropped a million for the last time he quoted, but it's...
Well, we spent money since the last time.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
So, the plan is take 139 out, and when we sell the piece of property, put it back in the general fund.
Right, right, it would go back into the general fund when we sold, sold property.
I move resolution forward with recommendation for approval.
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor of this resolution, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, thank you very much, that's the end of the finance committee.
I'll go ahead and open up Parks and Rec. We got two resolutions tonight. The first one is a resolution designating a project for the use of funds contributed by the Springdale Public Facilities Board. Luther George Park Improvement Project is hereby designated as the project to receive the contribution, and I'll let Doug elaborate.
Okay, I'll, I'll start, and Jill, if you may have questions for Jill, if she wants to add anything. The DSA is partnering with the city to, and will soon be private, raising private funds for, for the construction of Luther George Park. They've targeted about a, is it a $10 million project? I've been talking for a long time, and I've made no secret, and y'all have heard me say it several times, that we'd like for the city to commit 2 million to that. Because when, when Jill and others, and my, probably myself, some, when we go out and solicit for, for large donors, first question we get is gonna be, what's the city gonna do? And I can't go out and say, we're gonna put in 2 million dollars until the council says, yeah, we're gonna put in 2 million dollars. And so, if you remember, the Public Facilities Board passed a resolution... And so, if you remember, the Public Facilities Board, uh, passed a resolution saying that as they sold property, that they would make a contribution of two million dollars to the city, to, to a project of the city's choice. And what this resolution basically does is it makes Luther George Park the recipient of that two million dollars. So it just designates Luther George Park, um, and, and earmarks two million dollars for the park. Uh, Public Facilities Board is, uh, they have, have sold land and, and, uh, retired their, their obligation that was ahead in line, ahead of us in line. And so any property they sell then, uh, should contribute to this, uh, total of two million dollars. Uh, we probably won't need to actually spend this money for over a year. So Public Facilities Board has, has quite a bit of time to sell some land. Um, if they don't, I, I, I don't wanna, I, I wanna be totally honest here. If, if they don't, by that time, we would probably have to come back and contribute whatever of that two million isn't there, and then they would continue to pay us and would reimburse us for it. So just know that's a possibility a year from now or so, whenever, whenever construction starts. Because when construction, when it gets to the point in construction that we need to spend that two million, we'll have to, we'll have to spend it, whether the Public Facilities Board has sold enough land to send us the whole two million or not. Our hope is that they will, but there's always a possibility that they won't.
How much private funds have been raised?
We're just starting.
Well, we did, we started a year ago, didn't we?
No, we've not-
Go ahead, come on up to this mic, Jill.
So no, nothing's been raised yet?
You need to kinda-
Yeah. Nothing's been raised on the ten million?
It's been asked, no.
No. We, we've talked with some of the anticipated funders. We've shared with them the design. They've been partnered with us as we've gone through the design process. Uh, the almost million dollars was to design the park was provided by the Design Excellence Grant through the Walton Family Foundation. So when the design team gave us three options, you know, three, three ideas, we presented it to all the primary, the anticipated primary funders for the park. They gave us their input. We gave that input back to the design team. They came back and they, they developed the plan that you've seen presented before. So there's been a lot of community input. There's been a lot of, um, corporate and family foundation input, um, on the design plan. And there's a lot of anticipation that we're coming to ask for support for this. They all are aware that the city does not have ten million dollars ready to build this park.
Can, can we have a stipulation that the, that the, that the city's contribution be a maximum of the two million dollars, uh, with the stipulation that the remainders be raised by private funds, because that's what we were told to start with?
Yeah, that's what we're planning on. So we could, we could add that to the resolution.
If we could have that stipulation, then I-
The problem with that is, uh, even though you said what you said, Mayor, this resolution does not really obligate us to do in, to spend any more money. It just, all it does is say we'll, we'll-
Right.
Use money that they raise-
That's right. And that, that's all this resolution does.
Yeah, it's, it doesn't commit us to the rest of the-
But what I didn't want to happen is that we get a year down the road, I didn't wanna do it, I didn't wanna blindside anybody and get a year down the road, and then all of a sudden, we don't have the two million yet from the Public Facilities Board, and we gotta start construction.
Well, in, in the event that we do, I would, I would just like assurances that our, we limit the maximum of the city's contribution to this project to the two million, stipulating that the, the remainder's gonna be raised by the private funds, because that's what, that's, that's the pro- that's what always we've been told would happen, and I'd feel much more comfortable if we did it that way.
To that, the, to the construction?
Correct.
Right. Because we're not counting the hundred and thirty-nine, or no, two hundred and thirty-four that we just, and, and we're, we're compiling also, Patty's working on a list of all the improvements the city's made, including the, what's going to be the Park Street realignment and those things, so that, so that when we go to funders, yeah, we can commit this two million dollars, but we can also say, we've done all this.
Right. I think it's very important to communicate to the funders, like the mayor said, the contributions that have been made by the city that are making this project possible, and it extends beyond the two million dollars that's needed to kick off this capital campaign.
So Ernest, can we make those changes? You got a, you got those?
I believe so. I mean, the, the primary intent of this resolution is to inform the Public Facilities Board that we've now designated a project for that two million dollars that they agreed to contribute-
Right.
Because we are doing the improvements to Kendrick. But if we wanna add a-
Do, do we need to address the issue?
We prob- we probably don't need to now, but at some point in time, we do need to make a stipulation that that's gonna be the maximum contribution of taxpayers' funding of this project.
That could be done, that could be done when you all appropriate the funds at that time. This is just telling them, this is what we're gonna do with the money-
I agree.
Because that's what we're required to do under the resolution that passed.
Hey, in a perfect world, they'll sell a bunch of land, and we won't have to front it in.
That's what I try, was trying to say, but Ernest must say it a lot better than I did.
Okay.
Any other questions for me? Thank you guys for your support. And I'll be back with a report on our annual report and a report on the outdoor dining district, um, next month.
Yeah.
Or ne- yeah.
You'll, you'll come to-
Next week, actually. I'm gonna do it at the count, the next council meeting.
Come at the next council meeting, a week from-
Right, right. Today? Something, I saw my calendar.
Well, three weeks. Yeah, three weeks. Yeah.
Any other discussion? Any action?
I move the resolution be forwarded to council with a recommendation to approve.
Second, Pat.
Got a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? All right, we'll move it forward. The next and last item on the agenda is, uh, it's another resolution, a resolution authorizing the grant of a general utility water sewer easement across properties, which is Shaw Park, parcel number's two one dash zero zero one six seven dash four seven one, and two dash zero zero one six seven four, five four five, owned by the city of Springdale. And I think, correct me, Mayor, I think this is more or less just a formality that we kinda learned that we had the running all the way across Shaw Park or something?
Yeah. Yeah, this is-
That's correct. There's actually a map that actually got attached to the wrong resolution. It's on page forty-five, actually shows, it pretty much wraps, it's all around, looks like three sides of Shaw Park. We, we granted other ones, but it was found that we needed to have these as well.
So this was, this was brought to our, this was from Springdale Water Utilities?
Correct.
Yeah.
They were gracious enough, uh, to allow some service to go ahead and begin prior to granting of this easement.
Right, okay.
Water and sewer commission being gracious, give me a break.
I have a motion.
I move this, uh, resolution be forwarded to the full council for recommendation of approval.
Second.
All right, I got a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? All right, with that, I'll close Parks and Rec. If you don't have anything, we're adjourned.
Nope, we're adjourned. Thanks, y'all.
Thank you.